Welcome to the November 26, 2018 Board of Selectmen's Meeting at 6:30 PM. All members are present. At this time, I'd like you to all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I'd like to recognize some young men that are here this evening, working to get their citizenship and community badge, along with the troop leader. It's Troop 56, and the troop leader is James Sheehan. And, boys, welcome, and thank you for being here and giving back to the community. It's all about volunteering, and sure, they deserve one of those things. Okay, on to some business. Transmittals of the Treasury Warrant 2028, 21, and 21A. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bendel, seconded by Mr. Loud. Any discussion? All those in favor, unanimous? We have no minutes tonight, so we're going to go on to our first appointment, and that's with Lou Semaglia, the Director of Veteran Services, for the purposes of a dedication. And Lou, and with Lou, tonight, is the Superintendent of the Schools from Shawshene Tech, Tim Broderick. Tim, and we have two school committee men here tonight from the Shawshene Tech. We have Bob Peterson and Jim Gillis. Thank you for coming this evening. And I believe the shop teacher from the Shawshene Tech is also with us. He's an Army veteran. Thank you, sir, for your service. Rich Woodlock, thank you. Lou?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Selectmen members. Thank you for having us here tonight for this very special occasion. And I just want to start off by saying, "Thank you." I sat on this board for nine years, and it could be tough at times, but I would like to thank you for volunteering your time. Time away from your families, and in the current political climate and social media, you could be vilified for decisions you make. For me personally, I believe you make the decisions you make with the good of all the residents of Wilmington. And for that, I say, "Thank you." Tonight, we have an opportunity to once again show the country that our little town will always remember our fallen warfighters, and those that never made it home. We here in Wilmington have longstanding traditions of having -- excuse me, I was talking in my outside, my outside voice. Sorry about that.
That's okay, sir.
We're not on the call.
You want another one?
Sorry about that. We here in Wilmington have a longstanding tradition, many of them here, for having our Veterans Day ceremonies on the 11th day, the 11th month, the 11th hour, to honor the signing of the Armistice that ended World War I, in our Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony at the Veterans Lot. And we always have a large crowd. Many residents come out to show their respect for our fallen heroes. If you notice the podium that we have used at our ceremonies, in monument dedications, it was built and donated by the Shawshene Tech High School. They also built the base for our ceremonial bell that you've seen at all our ceremonies. We have been fortunate to have such a good relationship with the Tech for many, many years, not only through the Department of Veteran Services, but the entire town of Wilmington. Over the past 13-plus years, since I've been the Director of Veteran Services, I have called on the Tech many times, and they have always come through. Tonight, I would like to thank Superintendent Director of the Shawshene Tech, Tim Broderick, school committee members, that our worthy chairman has already mentioned, Jim Gillis and Bob Peterson, shop teacher, Army veteran who served in Iraq and was awarded the Bronze Star Medal. Thank you for your service, Rich Woodlock, and lifelong Wilmington resident and autobody teacher Dennis Rapucci, for being here tonight. These two gentlemen took on this project for this chair tonight with passion, caring, they took it personal, and it's, you're going to see in a couple of minutes, that it shows. Tonight, we have the honor to place a Chair of Honor. A very simple yet powerful chair. It's a single-back chair with the POW MIA logo on it, which is then flanked by the American flag and the POW MIA flag. Since World War I, over 91,000 servicemen remain unaccounted for. We in Wilmington are waiting along with the family of Ronald Dow Eaton to come home. Ronald was shot down in Korea, and I see his sister Joyce here, and of course, his niece Bev. Thank you for your family's sacrifice, and thank you for being here tonight. I know you didn't want to come, but I appreciate you for that. This chair is in their honor until they all come home. They will not be forgotten, especially in our great town. These Chairs of Honor are currently in Gillette Stadium, TD Garden, and Fenway Park, along with hundreds of cities and towns spread throughout Massachusetts, and now across the country. We as a community also dedicated a POW MIA Chair in the auditorium at New Wilmington High School, at our first annual town meeting there, when the auditorium opened up. It is said that there is loyalty in the simple act of remembrance. This Chair of Honor that simply sits empty in the corner of Room 9, as a tribute to those brave men and women who in the course of their courageous military service have been rendered missing in action or prisoners of war. The Chair of Honor serves as a solemn reminder of the sacrifice of the more than 80,000 U.S. servicemembers who remain classified as POW MIA. Visitors to this room, whether for a Board of Selectment meeting, or just to visit, will see that we as a town remember all our fallen heroes. In our country, the families of the American servicemembers who are POW and MIA have often suffered alone. Groups like the American Legion Riders have fiercely advocated for these families to ensure and remain on the forefront of our minds. For that, I say, "Thank you." Thank you, guys, for being here, and, girls, for being here tonight, not just tonight, for all you do year-round. I'd like to invite the Superintendent, if you want to say your words.
Briefly. Thank you, first of all, for having us all here this evening. I'd like to very quickly tell the story of how this came to happen over at Shawshene Tech. A couple of years ago, we were approached by folks involved with an organization called POWMIAChairofHonor.org. It was actually Wilmington resident Bob DePascual, who I believe is here this evening, who first introduced us. And their question to us was, "Would we build a POW MIA Chair to place somewhere at Shawshene Tech, so our students would see the empty chair, and learn to understand what it symbolized and its purpose?" When we handed the project to our vocational director, Dave Norowitz, Mr. Woodlock, in our carpentry program, and Mr. Rapucci in our auto collision program, we didn't quite understand what a passion project it was going to become for them and their students, due partially to Mr. Woodlock's service, but also because it just felt like the right thing to do to everybody, including the kids. They agonized over this, they designed several different chairs and built prototypes before settling on this design. One note that I think just should give you an idea how the community responded to this project, when Mr. Rapucci had the chair in autobody, and they were starting to work with paint and finishes, they weren't really happy with the materials on hand, so he called his paint supplier, explained what we were doing, and the company donated the very expensive special paint and clear coat that we were able to use on the wooden chair, required something a little bit different to adhere and look great. That's what happened at Shawshene Tech. The night we dedicated the first chair, which sits in our lobby right inside the main entrance, if you come in, you really can't miss it, was the night of a school committee meeting. And Mr. Peterson and Mr. Gillis from the school committee, I believe, made the motion, seconded the motion, to ask our teachers and students to build five more chairs, and provide one to each of the five communities that are members of the school district. So thanks to their leadership, and the work of our teachers and students, I have the honor of being here, but really to represent and reflect the intentions of the school committee, represented by your two delegates, and also the best intentions of our teachers and students and all their hard work. It's an honor to be here, and we're grateful to be able to do this with Mr. Semaglia and for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Talking to Mr. Broderick today, he said Wilmington's different than the other towns. I'm not sure if that was a good thing or a bad thing. But, Mr. Chair, before we invite to unveil the new chair, Mr. Chair.
I would like to invite any one of the school committee members, if they'd like to say a few words.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say a couple of things. I would like to reiterate, my personal thanks to Mr. DePascual, and not because he's Mr. Bendel's son or whatever. It was Mr. DePascual who actually requested that we get involved in this project after the chair was dedicated at the town hall, and it's, he's the reason we're here this evening. He doesn't like to take much credit, and I'm actually surprised he's here, but he is the reason we're here, and we thank him, and we thank all the veterans that are here today for their service.
Thank you. I don't want to put anybody on the spot, if you want to say a few words.
I'll echo Mr. Peterson's remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Would anybody like to say something on the board? Mr. Bendel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. Certainly a very proud moment for me tonight, not only as a very proud alumni of the school, but as a member of this community, certainly, just looking around at the crowd. We don't usually get a crowd like this, and inside Room 9 for these meetings unless people are really upset, so this is really nice to have everybody here for such a deserving occasion. So I certainly want to thank Lou and Mike, Mr. DePascual, Superintendent Broderick, Mr. Gillis, Mr. Peterson, and certainly my colleagues from the school, who did a fantastic job. And just another example of service that the school does for the community, and I just really think that, what a better way for these students to remember the sacrifice that some of Americans have made than this project. And I think that's the most important thing we can do. We can all be grateful for their service, but it's important that we pass it on to future generations, that they should know the sacrifice that was made, so that we can live in such a great community like Wilmington, and a country like the United States. So I want to also echo the comments that were made, and thank all the veterans that are here, and certainly, this is a very proud moment for me as a resident of the town.
I know it's going to be all said, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Superintendent of the Shawshene Tech for his school, and especially the young men and women who go to that school, who actually made this wonderful chair, and it really means a lot, and they do a fantastic job at the Tech, and I want to thank the veterans. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it on the 11th to honor you. I've been around a long time. I had a gig that didn't work out a couple of months ago. I promised my wife I'd take her to the White Mountains, and I didn't want to get her upset, believe me, so that's what I did. But, you know, in all seriousness, I really appreciate everything that you veterans have done. It really means a lot. I just want to say something to Lou in public. I won't mention his name, but I had a boy that worked for me. He went to fight in Iraq, and he lived in Tuxbury. He came back, and he was not in the best of shape mentally, and I reached out to Lou to help him, and you did a great job with him. He had a drug problem, and I want to appreciate what you did for him. Thank you, Lou. Thank you, guys.
Mr. E. I just want to echo my colleagues, thank everybody who's served that's in the room here tonight, or maybe couldn't be here. Thank you to the teachers at Shawshene Tech, Mr. DePascual, Mr. Gillis, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Broderick, and of course, you, Mr. Semaglia. I think you do yeoman's work, helping serve those who have already sacrificed so much. And if there's anything that your department needs, I would like to thank that you know that you've got a lot of allies up here, and although I don't think any of us have served, I think, I know that we have a lot of appreciation for those who have sacrificed. So thank you, gentlemen, and the other individuals in town who have served.
I also would like to thank everyone that has already spoken. My colleagues have spoken very well. A veteran is a very important thing to me. I wish I was a veteran. I couldn't get served. So my first week as a selectman, I contacted Lou, and I asked him to help me get a veteran that I could shout out to at every meeting. They were here, so I do that at every meeting, and I thank Lou for that. That's just one little minor thing that Mr. Semaglia does for this community, and tonight is a perfect example, bringing everyone together here. For the veterans that we all thank every day, we should be thanking every day, I do. One of the things I learned a couple of years ago was about the green light for November. My green light stays on every night, not just November, and it will forever. So I am deeply, deeply appreciated for every veteran that has served, or is serving, or is going to serve, because if it wasn't for you veterans, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't have the America that we have today. But I especially want to thank Shawshene Tech for taking the time. My son graduated that school, and I know how excellent that school is, what it had done for my son and his life and career. I'm deeply fond of the school and the excellent work that you do, and everything that you guys all do. So I thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I too wish to echo my colleagues' remarks, and thank you all for the work that you do for the kids at Shawshene Tech, for what they're doing for us, for the community, the school committee, how they support the programs over there, and for the teachers. And, Mr. DePascual, thank you for bringing this forward. I would like to recognize a Marine that just came in. I know his appointment's a little bit later, but he's here for Toys for Tots, and he's a Marine, on active duty, here with us today for another appointment, a little bit, but it's important that we recognize you as well. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the police and fire honor guard who are here with us, and thank you for being here this evening. And once again, to the veterans for your service, I cannot thank you enough on behalf of the town and myself personally, for what you have done and sacrificed for our freedoms. Thank you. Mr. Semaglia?
Yes, thank you for all the thank yous. It was wonderful, and again, I just want to reiterate the connection we have with the Shawshene Tech. We're fortunate, I'm sure Jeff could tell you a million stories, not just through Veteran Services, but through the town, of the help that they've come through in, with projects like this, and many, many more.
And let me turn to Mr. Holley.
Just as another representation of Shawshene Tech being really a living laboratory in terms of the way teaching is done, so there's certainly many ways of teaching, but I can't think of a better way of teaching about inexperience, history, than the appreciation for our veterans through the creation of this chair. This chair will serve as a living legacy for all of us and future generations, so I want to thank the Shawshene Tech, and also extend my appreciation and respect to all the veterans here tonight, and those who have served throughout the community.
Yes. If I could just say, Ed Loud raised the good point about his children. Couple of his kids went to Shawshene Tech. Let me say, two of my three children went to Shawshene Tech. Shawshene Tech's a great school. I have to really give kudos to them. It's a great school. And, Tim, a couple of months ago, I was trying to run for an election. It didn't work out. I have a free time. I noticed in the little sun, you had a great story about a food truck. Believe me, I flipped a few pizzas in my time, so if you need a little help, I'm there. All right, thanks.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Yes. Please.
I'd like to invite Mrs. Joyce Dalton up, and Bev, to help us. With the two teachers, please, that were so instrumental. No? No, we do not want to come on over. Rich and Dennis, I can't thank you enough on behalf of the town and all the veterans that we serve, and that you serve, and you know what this means, means to us. So I'd like to take this moment now to have everybody stand. We're going to unveil the POW MIA Chair, going to call the honor guards to attention. I'm sorry. And after we unveil it, we will have taps played by Ken Meeshad out in the hall. Go ahead. Mr. Chair, with your permission, I'd like to release the honor guard. And thank you to the Wilmington police and fire honor guard for always being here and supporting all our events. It's all you guys. Thank you. (Applause). Thanks, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Superintendent. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you. 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 I'll do it tonight. (Inaudible). Thank you. Thank you. I'll do it tonight. (Inaudible). Thank you. Thank you. I'll do it tonight. (Inaudible). Thank you. Thank you. I'll do it tonight. (Inaudible). Thank you. Thank you. I'll do it tonight. (Inaudible). Thank you. Thank you. I'll do it tonight. (Inaudible). Thank you. Thank you. I'll do it tonight. (Inaudible). Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'll do it tonight. (Inaudible). Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Would make up the thirty-nine point nine eight five percent, resulting in a residential tax, um, tax rate of thirteen seventy-five and a commercial tax rate of thirty dollars and ninety-four cents. The average residential bill would increase two hundred ninety dollars and seventy-four cents, and the average commercial bill would increase two thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy-one cents. Our average single-family value last year in two thousand and eighteen was four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and six hundred and four hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. And this year, the average single-family value is four hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. Even though the tax rate went down from last year, fiscal year eighteen, it was fourteen forty-one, and this year, the rate proposed at the maximum shift would be thirteen seventy-five, the average bill would still increase by two hundred ninety dollars and seventy-four cents. The, um, and just to make a note that included in that average is the debt exclusion from the school, which, um, the debt exclusion makes up three point seven four percent of the average bill. The average commercial industrial value will increase from fiscal year eighteen of one million, eight hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars to one million, nine hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, nine hundred and twenty-five. So their average tax, but tax rate will go down one point fifty-two, and their average bill will increase two thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy-one cents. I want to make a note and to be real clear that these are all averages, that some values have gone up more than others and some have gone, I wouldn't say have gone down, but they just haven't all increased at the same rate. But this is a uniform, um, method that the Department of Revenue uses as a unit of comparison. And we would, um, still, uh, we did look at the Middlesex and Essex County, uh, area like we had in one other presentation for you, and our rankings stayed the same on the two thousand and eighteen information. So we were still ranked out of eighty-two communities, we're still ranked number thirty-three, uh, from the lowest. So we're still below the, um, fifty percent mark for having the lowest tax bill. The next page gives you a single-family average, uh, tax bill analysis I included from two thousand to two thousand and nineteen, so almost a twenty-year view of what's happened with our property values. You can see values have gone up and have gone down. In two thousand and eight, we had peaked at a, us, average value of four hundred and two thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars, and then our, we had dropped to a low of three hundred and forty-nine thousand. The one thing I think that's, um, you could take note of here is that in two thousand and eight, when that was our, uh, people were thinking that was the, the peak of the market, um, we've surpassed that with today's average assessed value of four hundred and eighty-one thousand. That's in part, obviously, due to the market, but also the, um, new homes and the new, new data that we've added to our database. We're not building small ranches in town anymore. We're building seven and eight hundred thousand dollar colonials, so that's, um, affects what our average assessed value would be. So that is, uh, in part how we get to the four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. And just, we, um, don't predict the market, we interpret the market, so these are all based on calendar year two thousand and seventeen sales activity. The next page is, um, just a chart, so it's sometimes easier to see things graphically. And this is a, um, a graphic display of what the trend has been with the average assessed value since two thousand, so you can see that, uh, where we peaked, where we've come down, and that we're still on the rise. I will say that, um, we have looked at calendar year two thousand and eighteen sales. As the deeds come in to us from the registry, we compare them to our average assess, to the assessments of the properties. We've seen hundred thousand dollar gaps is not uncommon, so, um, people will see an increase. As you would note, um, when we were looking at the averages, the average assessed value went up forty-two thousand dollars, uh, this year. When we have these large gaps, values are going to go up, and we have to, um, meet the Commissioner of Revenue standards of being at a hundred percent of market value. So, um, I'm not sure, I've heard that, you know, some people feeling things are slowing down a little bit as interest rates have, have climbed, um, but we are still seeing some strong sales, certainly through the beginning of the fall with our, um, the deeds that have come through. The last page is the Wilmington, um, tax shift history. I provided that since two thousand and three, and you can see historically that the Board of Selectmen have always, um, voted to shift the maximum shift of a hundred and seventy-five percent. Back in two thousand and four, you'll note that it was, um, you pu, you made a shift of two hundred percent, and then one ninety-seven, one ninety, and one eighty-three in the subsequent years. And that was because there was a special act that allowed communities to shift more of the burden onto the commercial class, and that was because residential values were outpacing the commercial values. So the residents were picking up more of the burden, and even though you would push the maximum that you could, um, there was still no room for us to, uh, give any tax relief to the residential class through the shift. So you did opt to do that, um, up to the two hundred percent. Since then, it's, uh, been at the one seventy-five, and last year, it was fifty-nine point eight seven percent for the residential, and commercial was forty point one three. This year, the, um, the tax levy share would be sixty point, um, oh-one-four percent, and the rest, commercial industrial class would be thirty-nine point nine eight percent. And that would be if, um, the residential, that would be, the residential class on the left-hand side shows how much they make up of the value, which is, again, we are predominantly a residential community, uh, with values, um, making up seventy-seven percent in the residential class, and the commercial industrial personal at twenty-two point eight percent. If you shift to the hundred and seventy-five percent, the residential class will only pay sixty percent of the levy, and the commercial industrial pay thirty-nine point nine eight, excuse me, percent. So the Board of Assessors would just like to inform the Selectmen that the fiscal year nineteen excess levy capacity is approximately eleven thousand, six hundred seventy-one dollars, and the residential factor adopted by the Board governs the percentage of the tax levy, levy to be paid by the residential class. So if the Board votes a residential factor of point seven, 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 eight, eight, one, it will result in a shift of a hundred and seventy-five percent. That's the most favorable scenario for the residential taxpayer, and that's the recommendation of the Board, this, of the Board of Assessors to you this evening. Any questions?
Thank you so much for the presentation. Um, go to the Board first for questions, and then we'll go to the audience. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I just want to say, I've been working with you for a while, and I have to honestly say you're quite the professional. I think the town is done well by you as our assessor. I know you look at things fairly, but then again, you have to look at things in the real world. And historically, I've always, I'm going to support the Assessor's recommendation, number one. I've historically always supported the maximum tax shift upon the commercial. That basically gives the residents a more bang for their buck. And I've said that a lot of times. We get a lot of bang for our buck. We don't have user fees, we don't have bus fees, we don't have transport, you know, transportation fees relative to the bus or trash. But one thing I hear over and over, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say it, senior citizens, they go, Mike, the property tax went up again, and I'm sympathetic to that. I don't have a magic answer unless we make dramatic cuts in payroll. That's the only way we could give relief. That's the only way I could see it. The biggest expense of any corporation or any community or any business, you own a restaurant or you own Agfa or you own a company, is payroll, and I get that. I don't know exactly what we can do for those folks, but I say to them, the value of your house went up, that's the best I can say to these folks, but we need to look at something down the road. Don't have a magic answer, but I'm sure you hear that a lot, and my heart does go for these folks, and I don't know if there's anything that you could add to that.
I can comment, um, that there are exemptions for elderly that are by statute. Um, we had a few years back, brought to town meeting to increase bec, those, their income and asset limits, um, in order to qualify for the exemptions, and there's an exemption that's a hundred and seventy-five dollars off their taxes and one that's five hundred dollars. There's, um, several veterans exemptions that we have, and there's a exemption for the blind. So we do have about two hundred and fifty, um, five exemptions that are granted every year. One option would be is to, um, increase, you know, what the income, um, and asset levels are. Some of that's limited by a cost of living COLA, um, that the state issues every year, but those outside of that, um, there is always a deferral. Um, that we did increase the limit also for what your asset limit could be to, um, to defer your taxes. So there, that, there is an option for that, um, for some people as well.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the time. I appreciate that. If there's a way of getting that out to folks, if there's anything they need to do or whatever programs are available, we just got to try to target that. And I'll say, I was on the Board in two thousand and four, and I did vote the maximum ti, tax shift of two hundred percent, and we, like you said, we went down to one ninety-seven, one ninety, one eighty-three. If we never did that as a community, we'd be paying about two thousand dollars more a year in property tax today if we never did that. So that was a good act of the legislature when they did that, and you were correct. Thank you for the time, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Eaton.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Rashes. Uh, I, um, dovetailing off of Mr. McCoy's point, I, I would be interested to see an adjustment in, uh, some of the thresholds, um, for some of those exemptions to be available to, uh, the population or the, uh, demographics that you had referenced. I had, uh, sent a letter to Mr. Hull, uh, last week asking that we expand our senior citizen, uh, tax work-off program. In the last three years that we've done it, uh, we've averaged somewhere in the twenty to twenty-seven or so, uh, positions, uh, available per year. I do think that, uh, not only is that a good program, uh, that helps people that need it in town, excuse me, in town that, that have been here for a while, but I also think that it helps build partnerships between the community and its government, uh, as well, because it, it can be awfully easy to, um, to kind of sit back at home and complain about the pothole in the street, but if you actually have interacted with the individuals that can fix the pothole, you're more likely to actually pick up the phone and say, uh, hey, DPW, there's a pothole in the street, can you fix it? Uh, and I think it, it strengthens, uh, really the, the bond between the, the citizens of the community and their government. Uh, and I know that there's, it's an exemption, so it's the government taking a hit on the bottom line, but at the same time, I think, uh, more engaged, uh, population is more than worth it. So I, I would ask Mr. Hull to, uh, explore expanding that program, uh, if at all possible for fiscal twenty.
I would just comment on that as well, that the, um, senior exemption work-off program, that's eight hundred and eighty dollars they can, um, receive off their taxes by working, which is higher than what we would have for, for the regular exemptions of the one seventy-five and the five hundred. But, um, people should also know, I know some seniors don't file income taxes, however, there is a state senior circuit breaker refund, and it is purely a refund, but they have to fill out the, the income tax form in order to get that. The Senior Center helps them with that, and that one is much better than what we have, it's up to a thousand fifty dollars.
Is that information on your website?
Um, it is on our website, it's on a brochure that we have also that we hand out.
What's that website?
Um, TownofWilmington.gov, and go to the Assessor's Office under exemptions, right?
It was an pop quiz, I was trying to get, I was trying to get the information out there, but...
Yes, yeah, so it is on our website, but that is actually a state program, but we do bring it up so that they know because it's, it's a higher, um, amount off their taxes than what we can give.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, um, Mr. McCoy and Mr. Eaton bring up excellent points, um, and thank you for providing that information for everyone out there. But I, I wanted to bring up, um, reading the, the difference of residential, commercial. Back in the day, we were able to increase it to two hundred percent like Mr. McCoy mentioned. I noticed that the residentials are far outpacing commercial increases. Do you see that?
I do.
And do you see a change in the legislation again, like in two thousand and four?
I haven't...
So we can, so we can shift it again?
Sure, sure. I haven't heard of, um, you know, anyone proposing to do something like that again at this point, um, so I'm not sure.
I'm just trying to...
Should, yeah.
Not, not have everyone paying another two hundred and ninety dollars in taxes, that's all.
Right.
I'm looking at, and like, Mr. McCoy and Mr. Eaton brought up, we're trying to save money for the, the seniors and the veterans, which is excellent, but it's everyone in town, and, and I know everyone owns a house, I own a house, and I know the increase, but they hear another two hundred and ninety dollars, they're gonna, they're gonna hit us all up.
I, I will say, um, when we had done the analysis before and ranked ourselves, so if someone is coming to look at Middlesex Essex County in the northeast, uh, part of Massachusetts, um, and they were looking at what community they would want to select, and our ranking, I know our tax is going up, I don't like taxes going up any more than anyone else, um, but I can say that we're in the same boat as all of our surrounding communities, our ranking hasn't changed. So we were ranked number thirty-three in two thousand and sixteen, and in two thousand and eighteen, we've still stayed there. So even though our average bill has gone up, our surrounding communities has, um, gone up as well. Not that that helps matters, again, I'd like to not have taxes, I, I hear about it all every day.
I'm sure you do. We do also. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes. Karen, thank you very much for the presentation tonight. I look forward to, uh, supporting the shift again this year, and, uh, I think this is certainly one of the most important votes that we take every year, and certainly, I think it's, from my perspective, it's one of the easiest votes that we take, uh, because of the reasons that have been mentioned by my colleagues, is that what do we, whatever we can do to lessen the burden on residents and shift that to the commercial, uh, is certainly an obligation, I think, for all of us up here. And so I think we all hear from residents that, uh, about, uh, the, the rising costs of living in, in this area. Uh, I was just at a Pup Warner fundraiser the other night, and I had a senior citizen come up to me and, and with the same concerns, and it's difficult, like Mr. McCoy said, to look that person in the eye and say it's because of our, the value of our homes is going up. That doesn't help that person's situation, and so it doesn't help the person who's on a, uh, maybe a single-family income or perhaps a fixed income, uh, so it's difficult. So I just want to, if you could just clarify for me, and I think it bears repeating, and maybe just for the folks at home, uh, to make sure I have this right, so that, again, this year, our rate has gone down, so what, with the work that the town administration has done in terms of budgeting and spending, the rate has gone down, but again, the value of our homes have skyrocketed, uh, therefore, the tax bill will go up. Do I have that correct?
Um, that, that's, that is factually correct. The, uh, tax rate has gone down, values have gone up, however, um, so it, it gets a little bit more complicated when you have a split tax rate. So if you have a budget that is a million dollars and rates go, the values go up, the rate goes down. If the va, if the market drops, the values go down, the rate goes up, s, as long as, it depends what the budget is, what you're, what you're spending. So that's kind of, um, a formula, and then what, the other complicated piece is what goes on with the values, more commercial value, industrial value, residential, and how that, how that all, uh, plays out with who's paying what percentage. So this year, a portion of the reason why the taxes are going up is because the, um, percentage shift resulted in the residents going from the fifty-nine point eight seven up to the sixty point oh-one percent. So that's really kind of out of our control, it's really just a matter of, of the way the shift goes, but by going to the hundred and seventy-five percent, it does minimize, um, what, what the impact would be, as best as the ability of what you have before you to do.
Right. Well, thank you very much, and, uh, I said this, uh, last year at the same time we had this presentation from you, a, a very thorough presentation, I might add, uh, that I would just urge the manager to continue to take a conservative approach, uh, that he has, and so that, uh, we can do right by residents, and I look forward to supporting the shift to help residents in what is obviously, uh, a very good economy and a booming, uh, market. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just, um, to fall back again on, uh, Mr. McCoy and Mr. Eaton in regards to the exemptions, and did you say that the state sets the exemptions allowed, so for the elderly and the, the veterans and the blind, it's one seventy-five, five hundred? Is it something that, there's a threshold that, that the state says, oh, you can go up as high as two fifty, or you can go...
So there are some local options that can be adopted in, um, to raise the two different things. What we, what we did as a community is we raised the level of what the income and asset requirement is to qualify for the exemption, and then there's also, um, a provision in the law. Those are the base rates, but, um, other communities that are more affluent than us, uh, the, um, Lexington's, Concord's, Weston's, they're, uh, you know, an elderly person's living in a small cape, and it turned into a million-dollar cape overnight, and their taxes were substantial. They, um, modified the master and law to allow a provision to let you adopt, um, a, the, uh, what is it, the Consumer Price Index that will increase the amount annually of the hundred and seventy-five and the five hundred. So that amount could increase, some years, um, the Consumer Price Index, it goes up, some years it stays flat, but it will allow you to increase, um, the amount of the exemption that they can, that they can get off the taxes. So the one seventy-five could go up to two hundred, but it will take a little bit of time to get there. It'll be incrementally, you can't, um, each year. That, there's, there are many different provisions that allow different things between the veterans and the elderly, um, exemptions, yes.
Okay, so it's something that we couldn't just put forward at the town meeting?
We can, yeah, they're local options. So it's, it's not mandated, it's a local option.
And how does that affect, I mean, when you do something on one end, it affects something on the other end?
Absolutely.
So what happens when, if, if something like that happened, what happens to the, to the other end?
Exactly. So when you do that, you, um, the state does not reimburse for that, because it's a local option, so then that money has to be taken out of the overlay, and you'd have to, I mean, you're making a decision who has the ability to pay better. If you're going to give more in exemptions, that's coming out of the overlay versus, is it the young family just starting out has more of a difficult time? I mean, that's...
Right, that's the difficult choice.
That's your guy's decision, yeah.
That's why I wanted to bring that up, because I know that we're bringing up these exemptions and it's, but doing something on one end always affects something on the other end.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, it is a public hearing, so I turn to the audience if they have any questions that they'd like to, yes, if you could just state your name and residency?
As a matter of fact, my name is Bob Levaroni. I've been elected by the National Committee. Uh, I'm having a problem...
Bob, your address, just for the record?
I'm sorry?
Your address, just for the record?
Sixty-five Rand Ave. And, uh, I'm having a problem with taxes on, on my house. All right, let me, let me put it this way. What I see happening is that she's appraising the houses. When she appraises the houses, the taxes relax on the appraisal. But if the person in the house is in retirement, I was forced into retirement five years ago, and all I'm seeing is increase in taxes, increase in taxes. It's, everybody wants their house to be worth more, but when you're going to retirement and you only have your social security, now some people plan for retirement, some people are unable to. All I have is my social security, which is a, a third of what I was making full-time. My taxes, I was seven thousand dollars a year. How does that work out? It works out that I'm using four and a half months of my social security to pay the taxes on my house. I can't keep doing that. But when I retired, I got a reverse mortgage on my house. I had to, because I, I had four years left on the original mortgage. So I got a reverse mortgage, they say I can stay there until I'm in Wywood, which is fine. The problem is, the taxes keep going up, I'm not going to have any money to eat in a couple of years. I'm going to have, they're going to come in and force me to sell my house, because I'm not going to be able to pay the taxes, and all they require is the taxes and your house insurance. There is nothing that says that after retirement age, if you've been in Wilmington thirty years and you reach retirement age, you've paid taxes on your houses, on your house that you bought for twenty, twenty-five years, whatever the case may be. But after that, the taxes keep going up, but you can't afford it, you're going to be pushed out of your house, you're going to be forced to sell it. I don't want to do that. That's the house my wife and I planned, I moved in in nineteen ninety-five. It was the house we always wanted, but all I can see right now is that the taxes are going to take it away from me, and the mortgage company is going to make me sell it, because they can't afford the taxes. And there's some way that you can put retired people, not just me, I'm talking about all retired people that are sixty-five years of age into a bracket that the taxes on that particular house would come into a different bracket, which is drastically reduced from what they are now, that the person in the house can afford to pay. That's all I have, is, is to put that out there, see if you can come up with some kind of plan, because there's more people in town that are getting forced out of their houses because of taxes. They sell it, they can't afford it, they don't, you know, they don't want to go into rear, so they sell the house. I've been here almost seventy years, I want to be here at least another twenty years, because I already promised my kids I would live long enough to annoy them, so, that's all I got.
Um, I was going to say, I wish there was a provision in the law that would allow for something like that. Um, there, there isn't anything that allows for that, however, um, the tax deferral program might be an option that, I'm happy if you want to come into our office that we could give you the information on that.
Tax defer program, uh, there's a problem with that. Reverse mortgage people will not allow it.
We, we would allow it, I'm not sure about what the banks, um...
The tax defer till the end, and is that what you're saying?
So what I always explain to people is if you have, let's say, a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, and let's say your taxes are five thousand dollars a year, and you, for the next ten years, defer that, and so you defer, um, th, those taxes, when you, when your children sells or when you sell the house, and let's say you sell it for three hundred and fifty, you owe fifty thousand in taxes, somebody still gets three hundred thousand dollars, whether it's your children or, or the estate or, or you to move on to go to Florida or, or what have you, but you can, um, defer the taxes and you, and they get paid at the time you choose to sell or, um, move on.
Defer them only, well, see, that's the thing, that, that the reverse mortgage doesn't want to defer taxes, so they would be, if I'm in the ground, they're not going to get their taxes.
I'm happy to talk about the details with you, because, um, we have had some banks that, I believe, that have gone along with it, but I don't know your specific bank.
You know, I, I wanted to put that out there, because there has to be a plan. I'm sure there's more people in this town that are longtime residents that are running into the same problem. Yeah, maybe they sold the house to their kids, maybe they sold, you know, to get away from it, I don't know. But what I'm saying to them right now is that I have no other recourse except to do something about the taxes, drastically reduce them, so I can afford them.
Yeah, I empathize with you.
I mean, I'd set up an appointment, go down to our audience and talk about it.
I would suggest that, yeah.
But, you know, there's got to be some kind of a basic plan. You know, like I said, if somebody's here thirty years, they reach retirement age, they go into a different bracket where their, their, their taxes are in a different bracket altogether, that are drastically reduced from what they are now.
Just to, um, reemphasize, the, the provisions that, uh, the assessor, Karen Rashes, has talked about are all dictated by state law, so individual municipalities, uh, are not, um, able to set our own tax policy. You know, the, the state establishes certain parameters, whether they're these exemptions that have been referenced, uh, the tax deferral program, so they give municipalities certain tools, if you will, that communities, in our case, through town meeting, um, can offer, uh, but i, i, the suggestion that you were making about somehow bracketing a certain age group of people or a status of people who may be retired, uh, is, to my knowledge, there's no provision in the general laws of the Commonwealth that would allow a municipality to do that, so, you know, again, we're subject to the, to the laws of the state, and, uh, and we just have to work within them.
It is certainly a good idea, that, don't, um, get me wrong, I, I like your suggestion, what you're saying, but as Mr. Hull said, it is, is state-regulated, and I'm wondering if we should take that suggestion, do our, our legislators, um, you know, from Wilmington and Tewksbury, and, uh, s, see if they can look at it and, and give them a little nudge, and, uh, see what, uh, see what happens there. If we can send them a little letter with something put together with that suggestion, I mean, you know, it's...
It affects a lot of...
It's going to affect a lot more people, because a lot more people are going to be hitting that retirement age, uh, and, and pretty soon we'll have more retirees than, than what you... you can imagine, and they're gonna have to address the issue at some point, uh, up at the State House, and this may be a good starting point just to get it on their radar anyways. But I, I don't know, other than you meeting with Karen, that there's anything that we can do at, at current time.
Well, she's about to set up an appointment, uh, before they're, they're gonna discuss the whole thing, and she's gonna come up with a solution, you know, to, to my problem anyway, I don't know about the rest, but maybe there's a way. Uh, thank you for listening today.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Um, okay, I'll go back to the selectmen, I, we all sat, well, okay, if there's no one else that has any questions or comments, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. A motion by Mr. Bendel, seconded by Mr. Eaton, any discussion? All those in favor? And that's unanimous, and now we'll go and, um, take a vote on, um, the recommendation from the Board of Assessors, uh, for the shift, uh, classification of the shift of 1.75%, uh, which results in a minimum residential factor of .777881 for fiscal year nineteen.
I'm making a motion to accept this described by the chairman.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCoy, seconded by Mr. Bendel, any discussion? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Yes, just so that you know, that there is a form that you guys, um, need to sign, and Mr. Hall, Town Manager, has that at the end of the meeting. Yeah.
Karen, Karen, is this stuff's gonna be on the website that you provided to Mr. Eaton?
Sure, we can do that. Thank you.
Is that the form going on?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, the form is coming around. Come on. Okay, we're on to our 7:30 appointment, and that's with, uh, Ulyssa Chavez, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Okay. All right, why don't you come, come up forward, uh, from, uh, Pancho's Inc., doing business as Pancho's Cantana, uh, for the request of entertainment license for property located at two, 206 Balladville Street. Why don't you introduce yourself since your wife is on the list?
Sorry, yes, so my name is Alessandro Chavez, I also go by Chef Fonzie. I'm the owner of Pancho's Cantina and also the liquor license manager.
And you're looking to get entertainment, music at the establishment?
Correct, correct. We're looking to just, uh, to have a mariachi band perform on, uh, certain days a week, uh, kind of like our slower days, possibly Tuesday or Wednesday, uh, to bring in a mariachi band just to perform and sing to the people, to our guests.
That's great. Now, does anybody have any questions?
Is it either going to stage or is this the mari...
No, just...
Walking around like...
Yeah, just walking around and performing, basically singing. It's a three to four-piece, uh, group. Um, they don't hook up to anything other than just, you know, playing their instruments and, uh, performing at the tables for the people or around the bar area. Um, it, it's not for concerts or anything, I'm not gonna be selling tickets or anything like that. Um, it's literally just for mariachi band. We have, um, a couple of different to choose from. There's this one gentleman who, who'll put on music, and it's almost like a karaoke thing, but he dresses up as a mariachi, uh, with the, the sombrero and the whole, uh, get-up, and then he kinda sings to, sings the songs. Um, there's also another, uh, another group, there's four gentlemen who sing and, uh, you know, play the instruments and walk around to the tables. We have a couple of different to choose from, uh, and that's basically what we're looking to do. Thank you.
Great. Anybody else have any? Yes, Mr. Eaton?
What's your anticipated frequency for this? Is this an every night or is it Friday or Saturday or?
No, we're, we're trying to pick up like our slower days. Um, right now, really, the, the slower days are like Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Um, so we're hoping to do it possibly Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, I think, is, you know, we haven't confirmed that yet, uh, because there's two different bands, we haven't confirmed anything, plus we wanted to make sure we get the, the approval first.
Yeah, I would say the live entertainment's no different than the other fine restaurants in Wilmington that offer live entertainment as well. And I can honestly say, I've been in your establishment a few times, as you can tell, and I, I think you do a really great job, there's ample room in there for, for that singing to take place, and it's something unique, something different. I do support it, and, uh, I think you've got a great establishment. And you said your wife's not here, obviously, and kids listen, your mother's and future wife's are a lot more important than your dad's, so the wife's at the restaurant, so she's showing to me that she's the real boss, like my wife was at me at my place. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, yes, and she is.
Mr. Bendel?
Yeah?
Thank you very much for this, I think it's great, I can't remember the last time we had a mariachi band in town, so I think, uh, certainly be a nice, uh, addition for folks on, uh, the, some of the nights of the week, so thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it as well. Uh, are there any recommendations, uh, Mr. Hall?
Uh, yes, actually, uh, a couple of recommendations and then a, a point I need to bring up. Uh, the police chief, uh, notes, uh, after review of the application for an entertainment license, license by Pancho's Cantina, police department recommends approval, uh, the fire department, uh, also recommends approval. Uh, unfortunately, the building inspector, uh, had not seen the, uh, request, uh, for this, and there's, uh, I don't anticipate an issue, but, uh, there's a requirement that, um, if the capacity exceeds 125, uh, including the staff, that there would need to be a licensed crowd control manager pre- uh, present during that time of the performance. So I, I would recommend that the board, um, vote, uh, in favor of this contingent upon successful, uh, review by the, um, building inspector.
Okay. And how many does your establishment seat?
Uh, the actual capacity is 150 is what it was approved for, and, uh, seating I have is 124, 125, somewhere around that is what I have, actually seating, um, seats in the building.
Yeah, but, uh, you don't have 150 people there at one given time?
No, no, I, I would love to.
Yeah.
Please.
A mariachi band.
Yes, seriously, hopefully.
Okay, is there a motion to accept, uh, the entertainment license with, um, the...
Contingent upon...
Contingent upon the building inspector's approval? So that way we don't have to come back.
I'll move the grant to request.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bendel made the motion, Mr. McCoy seconded, any discussion? All in favor? All right, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, I just also wanted to note as well, uh, crowd control manager, I actually did the training myself and my wife as well, Ulyssa Chavez, we both have done it, I'm just not sure how long it's good for. Um, I did it about five years ago, so I'm not sure if it's still active or not, so if I have to redo it, I don't mind redoing that, or we can both redo it as well if needed.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing the band. Okay, our next, uh, our 7:40 appointment is with Frank West and the Toys for Tots program. Uh, this is a yearly event.
Hi, good evening, gentlemen, and certainly Bess and, uh, the public, and especially the scouts. Uh, I'm Frank West, I coordinate the Toys for Tots program through the Marine Corps Reserve for both Wilmington and Tewksbury with my wife Karen, and we have several volunteers that help us out. Uh, I'd like to introduce that we have Staff Sergeant Dowell, who's, uh, from the program, from, yeah, actual, uh, obviously a, a United States Marine, and certainly wanna thank him for his service, and he'll be speaking in just a second, and, uh, also like to recognize Sergeant Cunningham, who's up from Fort Knox, Kentucky, enjoying our beautiful winter weather. So we're trying to find out, asking him where the gold is, I don't know if we're gonna find that out tonight or not, but, uh, in either case, uh, for the last sixty-odd years, the Marine Corps Toys for To- Toys for Tots program has been in existence. Uh, for the last 22 years, my wife Karen and I have run the local program, which is out of, we, we were out of, uh, Fort Devens, and what we service is Middlesex and Essex County, which obviously includes both Wilmington and Tewksbury. Um, but I'd like if Sergeant Dowell would explain a little bit quickly about the, uh, the Toys for Tots program, and then he's got a presentation that he'd like to make two years, and then I just wanna talk for just a moment or two about the local program.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Staff Randell, and, um, we also support, like you said, Middlesex and Essex County. Last year, we, we supported 100 and, 120,000 toys that we gave out to the kids. Um, we supported 80,000 kids in total, and we're gonna exceed that number this year, we're on track of exceeding that number with the help from the community. Um, it's been a great help, and we are out of Devens as well, and we have volun- we have about 12 volunteers for active-duty Marines, we have 55 volunteers for the reservist Marines, and we also get help from the National Guard and the Army. So, um, we do it for the kids, we do it for the families, and we just hope to continue having a support of the community.
Yeah, and I just wanted to let you know, just on the local note, you know, we've got toy boxes all over, you know, both Wilmington and Tewksbury. Uh, wanna thank the town manager for his continued support, having a box here at Town Hall. We have toy collection boxes at many of the schools, a lot of the businesses, you'll see, like, if you go to, for example, Market Basket, several of the banks, the Reading Cooperative Bank, both locations at Wilmington, uh, Citizens Bank, a lot of the, a lot of private companies have for their employees different, you know, toy collection boxes. Uh, and I did wanna let yous know about an event that we're having at, at our location, which is West Real Estate at 386 Main Street. Uh, this Sunday from 1:00 to 3:00, we've got former Bruin Rick Middleton coming, uh, to sign autographs for, you know, for a toy or cash donation. Uh, the nice thing about Rick is that on the 29th of this month, he's having his number retired at, uh, the TD, uh, TD Garden, so it'll be a kind of a, you know, one of his first appearances as a retired numbered, uh, Boston Bruin. And with that, I just wanna hand out, if I could just pass down this, um, pliers, and there's also a pin that you guys could have as well. And, uh, you know, certainly, uh, available to ask if you have any questions at all about the program, how to get toys, uh, 'cause certainly, you know, part of the idea is, is that I'm in the collection end of it, but, you know, the Marines here are, you know, in the distribution end, and I certainly wanna make sure that, you know, needy families in Wilmington and Tewksbury, which are the two towns that we, that, you know, withers on managers for, you know, get, get service and get whatever they need from the program. Uh, I will say also, just real quick, is that at that event that we're doing, we also have the, uh, we're fortunate to have the Wilmington Corps on us, as well as Boy Scout Troop 136 that's gonna be, uh, helping us out at that as well, so, you know, anyone's free to come down if you wanna get an autograph or pitch with Rick. We got AMP 103s coming down also to do some Christmas and holiday music, so if you have a few minutes and you wanna drop off a toy or see, you know, see Rick Middleton, come on down. Uh, but certainly, between all of us, we could answer if you have any questions at all, and then, like I said, the Staff Sergeant would like to, uh, make a quick presentation to the town, uh, on behalf of either yourself, Kevin, or the, or Town Manager, Jeff.
Thank you, thanks Frank, and thank you, gentlemen, for your service, very much appreciated. Is there a time, but, I mean, what, isn't there a deadline that you need all these toys in by, is there a date for that?
Basically, what we're gonna be doing is, is that we're gonna be collecting through the 14th of December at the local locations that we've talked about, and then what I'm gonna do is, is that, because people, a lot of times people are Christmas shopping and have, you know, whatever, that they have extra toys, we leave Market Basket, both in Wilmington and in Tewksbury open, uh, as a toy drop, you know, as a centralized location because they're open from 7:00 in the morning until 9:00 at night, and they're a great central location for people, everybody kinda knows where they are. But through the 15th, through the 14th, rather, is when we're gonna do the major pickups, and the, the reason being, and, and thank you for asking the question, Kevin, is that what happens is, is that the toys will go from whatever centralized location, for example, our location, they go to a centralized warehouse in Woburn, then they have to get sorted, and then from, after they get sorted, this list that they have to fill out, both to individual families and to various, uh, agencies, so they gotta go into that sort bin and then get sorted, uh, you know, whatever the agencies are, and then get resorted from there, so, and to get everything out by like the 22nd or so, so people, 'cause you know yourself, I mean, it's, it seems like we're a ways away from Christmas, but it creeps up real, real fast.
It's a challenge, yeah.
Yeah, and, and these guys, the volunteers, do a phenomenal job, and they're always looking for more volunteers, so, you know, anyone wants to do a community service project, happy to work that out with somebody.
And you can steer them in that direction, they can get a hold of you if there's a...
Absolutely.
Wilmington High School student or something that needs, uh, they're always looking for volunteer credits or, or hours or something to put in.
Yeah, and we can sign off on credits, and if somebody, you know, I, either through me or through the zone, the Marines, we can get time signed off for anyone that needs it.
Yeah, great. Does anybody have any comments, questions? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you, Mr. West, and my, my best to Mrs. West, thank you for all that you do for this program and obviously with the scouts, um, incredibly active in our community, so we're grateful for that, and certainly to the two fine gentlemen that are joining us here tonight, we really appreciate you being here, welcome to Wilmington, and we really appreciate, on behalf of all the residents here, uh, your service to our coun- to our country, and specifically, thank you for your efforts in this very worthy cause, and I hope it's a complete success for you, I look forward to, uh, supporting it as well.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I wanna thank you, Frank, you and your wife, you step up to the plate every single year to do this, I take my hat off to both of you, and just to echo my colleague, Mr. Bendel, Selectman Bendel, I appreciate all of what you folks do serving our country, it means the world to us, and, uh, appreciate everything you do every single day, thank you.
Uh, Mr. West, thank you, this is a, a great program, and I think great timing for, uh, having Rick Middleton there as well, and you two gentlemen, thank you very much for your service, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, um, Frank and, and Karen for everything you do, especially Toys for Tots, I've participated, participated in the past, and will, again, this year, and to the two fine gentlemen, thank you for your service. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I...
Did you wanna conclude?
I'm sorry, I, I do thank you for the com- for the, uh, uh, comments, and thank you very much, on behalf both of my wife and I, uh, but like I said, and I say it every year, I mean, we, we run around and put out empty boxes, and somehow they get filled, so we appreciate the fact that the community has well supported the program for many years and continues to support the program, and, and like I said, we, you know, all we're trying to do is to say, you know, we can't solve all the world's problems, but if we can make it a little bit nicer for a few folks on Christmas Day, why not? And, you know, maybe, you know, they're in a tough situation now, but hopefully their situation gets better, and, and instead of being a recipient of programs like Toys for Tots, there'll, there'll be a, a future donator to the Toys for Tots program, or, or quite truthfully, any charity, so I mean, whether it's Toys for Tots that people are helping out, or Salvation Army, or whatever the cause is, I mean, if, you know, Wilmington has a good reputation for, for volunteering, as you guys said, so it's, it's, it's really nice to see the, the community step up for this program, as well as other holiday programs and programs throughout the year that, uh, that the town does, so, uh, with, with that, I'd like to, uh, ask, uh, Staff Sergeant Dowell if he'd like to make a presentation. Uh, I don't know if it's the appropriate person, is it Kevin or Town Manager, whichever, or both, or?
Joe? Joe? Yeah, we did, we'll take a picture, right?
On behalf of the United States Marine Corps Reserve, Toys for Tots Association, we are proud to present this award to the town of Wilmington for outstanding support of the 2018 Marine Corps Toys for Tots program.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna conclude. Frank, you agree? And Sergeant, you, James?
I remember that, yeah.
Did you get everyone together?
I'm sure we can share all of them.
And just last note, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that was our last appointment for the evening, uh, we're gonna go back now to communications and finish that up.
Just last note, happy holidays and merry Christmas. Thank you all very much.
Okay, that was our last appointment for the evening. We're going to go back now to communications and finish that up. We have two more, I believe, two more communicate to go through.
So next on the communications is correspondence from Kelly Maggie Wright, the executive director of the Minuteman Senior Services. And this is an annual correspondence that is sent out to the town. Minuteman Senior Services is one of the sources, resources that Terry Marciallo and the Senior Elderly Services Program relies upon. They service 16 communities. And each year, we get this letter that reports on the number of Wilmington residents that were serviced. This year, 1,346 residents received service. And the estimated value of those services is $1,474,837. Next, under correspondence is an invitation from Mark Dreisen, who is the executive director of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, with respect to a breakfast meeting to kick off their efforts to begin the planning and review of their regional metro common 2050 plan. It's my understanding that this discussion will actually involve the sub-region, which for Wilmington is the north suburban region. He is asking for up to two representatives from the Board of Selectmen and up to two representatives from other departments, including the planning office that may be involved in the planning process. So the meeting is scheduled for December 13th, 8:30 to 10:30, at the Stone Common House and Kitchen in Stonem.
And that's it for correspondence?
Just one final piece of correspondence, actually two items from Comcast. First being their annual notice of increases in fees for the various programs and services that they offer. And then the second piece of correspondence, which also goes out to subscribers, deals with some channel changes and changes in various programs that Comcast offers.
Thank you. And we're onto Board to Consider.
So under the first item for Board to Consider, we have a request from Kayla Bernardo to use the Swain Green on Saturday, August 10th, 2019, at 4:00 PM for the purpose of having her wedding ceremony. We are not aware of any conflicts on that date and time.
I see you in the audience to make sure that it goes through, huh? No, no.
You do on August 10th.
That's right. Yeah, make sure. Is there a motion to accept this?
Second.
Mr. Loud, the motion. Mr. Bendel seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Good luck.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
The next request or Board to Consider is the request of Police Chief Mike Begonis and members of the Police and Fire Department to conduct the Santa Parade on Sunday, December 9th, 2018, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, as previously noted.
Okay, is there a motion to accept...
So moved. Second.
The town manager's explanation of the Santa Parade? There's a motion by Mr. Loud and seconded by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Is that, did I get that right or did I miss?
No, you got it right.
All right. I don't know if Mr. Eaton jumped in first.
I think I'm neck and neck with a lot of people tonight, so.
I'll get you in the next one.
Next on the Board to Consider is designating up to two representatives to attend the MAPC subregional planning meeting that was just referenced.
Okay, does anybody wish to attend? I can attend unless someone else wants to or others, they're asking for up to two.
I have a word conflict.
It's for breakfast. Yeah, come on, man, yeah.
Duty calls that day.
All right. Okay, so do we need to make a motion for this? I mean, it's on a Board to Consider, it's just...
I just needed to know so that we're good.
All right. So someone else that's hanging around and wants to go, let us know. Okay.
The final item under Board to Consider is the proposed change of the town accountant position to finance director. Town accountant, you'll recall, this was brought up at the last meeting. And based upon the opinion from Mark Rich, it is possible, from a policy perspective, for the Board of Selectmen to establish a policy that would allow for a finance director, town accountant, with the understanding that if at some point in time, the board decided to change it back to the current situation, that that could be done. As was previously noted, in order for this type of change to be made in a more permanent way, it would require a town meeting article to actually amend the Town Managers Act. And then it would require approval by the legislature. But I think the intent at this point would be to allow for this finance director, town accountant position to be created on a policy basis. And as was earlier noted, this, in this position would oversee not only the town accountant's office, but the treasure collector and the assessing office.
And it does not change the appointment of the Board of Selectmen to this position?
Right.
So the Board of Selectmen still has the appointing authority?
That's right. So the Board of Selectmen would still appoint this position. And I would continue to appoint the treasure collector and the principal assessor.
Yes, Mr. Bendel.
Chairman, thank you. Just to be clear, we're only voting on what's listed here on the agenda, correct? I mean, I think it was our colleague, Mr. Kyra, who mentioned some really, you know, he made some important comments last time we spoke about this, is that there were some provisions in that packet that we received that maybe need a little more debate. So we're strictly voting on this and not approving everything that was presented in that packet. Is that correct?
That's right. This is very specific to this item only. There were a host of items, as you'll recall, in the document that was produced by the representatives from the Collins Center. I think those should be a discussion at another meeting. And certainly, to the extent that the board wishes to pursue any of those other items, those should be dealt with separately.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, is there a motion to change the position title, I guess, of town accountant to finance director slash town accountant?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Eaton, seconded by Mr. Loud. Any other discussion? All those in favor? And it's unanimous? Yeah, unanimous. Okay. And we're on to public comments. Does anybody want to make a comment? I don't see anybody. So we're on to new business. And we'll start with Mr. Loud.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the opportunity that I get to shout out to a veteran. And I'd like to shout out to a couple of them. One of them is Rafael Cruz, who just came home. He's actually in the 01887 area code, I hope, right now. He's home in Wilmington. I saw a video and I saw the police procession when he did get home. So that was excellent. He's a Wilmington police officer. He's an Army veteran. He's also a Mass National Guard. He just came home from a long duty in Wilmington last week. Also, want to note out to Nick Noftal, I think I'm saying that name? He's still an active duty, but he is stateside. So I want to thank those two officers for their service, not only to the country, but to this great town and also to their families. So thank you, them. And then tonight, when we were having the chair, a gentleman came up to me and asked me to give out a shout out to a 98-year-old Windsor Place resident. His name is Gordon Seitman. He's a US Navy veteran. He's a World War II veteran, he's a Korea War veteran. And thank him for his service also. Thank you. And I hope everyone had a great holiday and a big one's coming up soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Eaton?
Just to comment that this was a kind of a special meeting. We honored our POW MIA with the dedication of a chair. We gave permission to an individual to have a wedding on the Swain Green. We heard about Toys for Tots. A lot of good stuff going on. So I know, we had to deal with the tough stuff about taxes, but a lot of good stuff going on around town. A lot of good people being very generous and very thoughtful. So, good stuff.
Mr. McCoy? Mr. Chairman, just two quick points. I'd like to thank the Attorney General's Office, Marah Healy, or Healy, may I say. They really stepped up to the plate relative to, as you know, the asbestos situation we had on Musab. And it shows, I think she does a great job, Marah Healy. And she really cares for the citizens. And I think they levied, what, $125,000 fine? I read that in the Little Sun as well. I think that was something remarkable. And it's just a message out there that, you know, you got to take care when you're a builder in this community or any community within the 351 cities and towns. And the other thing is, I'm sure some folks are very well aware, Mark Rattman's a selectman from Tuxbury. Him and I, prior to the Thanksgiving football game, we had a friendly wager. And if the Tuxbury Redmen won, that I would treat him to his breakfast of his choice, which I believe is the Lantern Restaurant out in Tuxbury. And if the Wildcats won, and unfortunately they didn't, but I was rooting for them, I was going to have breakfast here at the, as good as it gets. So I'm going to be traveling to Tuxbury and I'm happy to do that. And I know some folks said, oh, was in the, they were all said Tuxbury's going to the Super Bowl. But hey, I'm a Wildcat through in and throughout. And what can I say? I'm with you. Thank you.
Mr. Bendel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to expand upon my colleague, Mr. Eaton, certainly, there is a lot going on in the community. And I want to urge folks to make sure you get out there this weekend and take advantage of some of the great events that are going on, from the WOW Festival of Trees that's going on all weekend, to the wonderful tree lighting that's planned for this weekend, the pre-mentioned Toys for Tot event that is going on with Mr. West. And also, this Sunday, they also have the Winter's Farmers Market. So there's certainly a lot to take advantage of. And I hope folks will do so and enjoy and have a lot of fun with it.
Thank you. Okay, we're all set. Important dates, Mr. Hough?
Yes, important dates. We have yard waste collection continuing through December 7th. November 28th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Once again, on December 1st, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. December 1st, Christmas tree lighting, as was previously noted. Town Common, 4:00 PM. The December 1st and 2nd, the Festival of Trees is at Villanova Hall. December 2nd, Holiday Social, Harndon Tavern, 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. December 5th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. December 6th is Santa's Workshop, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. December 8th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. December 9th, Santa's Run, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. That's the program involving police and fire. December 10th is another Board of Selectmen's meeting here, 7:00 PM, Room 9. December 24th, town offices close at noon. December 25th is Christmas Day, town offices will be closed. Officers will be closed again on January 1st for New Year's Day. And then January 14th, Board of Selectmen's meeting here at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining with International Association of Firefighters Local 1370 in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. And that upon conclusion of the executive session, the board will adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Loud, seconded by Mr. McCoy. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank, oh, roll call, I'm sorry. Mr. Bendel?
Mr. Bendel, aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Loud?
Yes.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Thank you, Bev, for reminding me of that. And with that, thank you and good night.